Please rise and give your name and the pledge. The flag is all women for our partnership. The pledge is to keep the flag of the United States of America. And to the pilot, for which it stands, one nation under the other. In the end of this all, they would not exceed them just as well. Greetings. In the name of the State of Maine, who are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of each of the municipalities, the National School Unit 16, namely the towns of McCann Falls, Minette, and Polon, qualified to vote in town affairs to meet in the auditorium of Polon Regional High School, 1457 Main Street, Polon, Maine, in the said town of Polon, May, on Tuesday, the 23rd day of May, 2023, beginning at 6:30 PM, to act on Articles 1 through 20 of this warrant to the end. I would now like to have the board chair, Mary Martin, welcome to the right of the room.
Welcome, and thank you for taking time to participate in the RRG 16 budget approval process. I'm Mary Martin, RRG 16 Board Chair, and I'd like to open this meeting the way that we open all of our board meetings, which is focused on our student-centered mission. Our mission is to prepare and support all students within a culture of excellence, to do their best and to be their best, so that each can be a successful contributing citizen, able to adapt to change and to successfully respond to the future. The RRG 16 mission statement provides a focus for our work, and that does include our budget development work. In a few minutes, we'll choose a moderator for this meeting. But before we start, I'd like to talk briefly about the budget process. And it will be, after choosing a moderator, will be followed by an overview of the budget by Superintendent Neely, as well as an explanation of the revenues and the tax impacts by our business manager, Stacy Field. The RRG 16 budget proposal that you're going to hear about this evening is the result of the work of Minette. It's a product of a collaborative approach that has included both school and community representation. Administrators and central office staff began working on this budget in late fall. Early in the year, a budget committee was formed and met for an entire day and multiple evening meetings. The RRG 16 Budget Committee was made up of town and school representatives. As Budget Committee Chair, I'd like to recognize the committee members for their dedication and for their hard work. Community members, Polon, Mary Beth Taylor, McCann Falls, Tony Trussoni, and Minette Lucisiter. Board members, Andrew Ben, Deborah Basco, Elizabeth Martin, Melanie Harden, and Mike Downing. Central office representatives were Ken Neely, Amy Hedder, and Stacy Field. I'd also like to thank our RRG 16 administrators, department directors, and central office staff for their presentations, and also for their presence at the budget meeting. As a Budget Committee, we answer a lot of them, and we certainly appreciate it. As I said, the Budget Committee met during the month of March and reviewed every department budget and discussed priority items, and also checked impact. A budget proposal was developed and was presented to the RRG 16 School Board on April 10. Following public comments and questions, the School Board voted to support the budget that's before you this evening. All the actions that I mentioned previously are part of the budget development process. The night is shipped to the budget approval department. It's a two-step process that's in compliance with state law, our consolidation agreement, and the vote that our communities took last June, which supported the continuation of this two-step process. This evening is step one. It provides the detailed explanation and votes of the individual warrants. Pending budget approval this evening, step two will take place in each of our towns on June 13. A written referendum vote is a yes or no vote, not a line-by-line, cost-effective vote. This evening is your opportunity to understand the details behind the yes/no vote that's on the referendum. Each budget year has its unique challenges and opportunities, and definitely this year was no different. Although our goal remains the same, which is to develop the budget that supports programs and ensures success for our students, while at the same time is fiscally responsible. Ken and Amy are going to talk about the actions that have been taken this year to meet that goal. So now we will choose a moderator for the evening's meeting. Ken?
Article 1, to choose a moderator resides at setting. I would like to see if there's a nomination for somebody to be the moderator.
I nominate Greg Keane.
Second. I have a second. Are there any other nominees? Is there any discussion? There is no discussion. All those in favor, ready to begin?
Welcome.
All those opposed? For this task, Greg? Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to faith that you perform the duties of moderator for RRG 16 Budget Meeting in accordance with the Constitution, laws, and state laws?
I do. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for showing up and participating in this meeting. Thank you for electing me to be your moderator and sparingly discussing on that motion. So my first prayer of business is to swear in the ballot course. You know, doing that right now isn't before you. You can stand. Yeah. Do you swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Maine so long as you continue to be a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge to the best of your ability the duties incumbent on you at Battle Corp of the Regional School Unit Number 16 Budget Meeting on May 23, 2023, according to the Constitution and the laws of the state?
Okay.
Okay, so the next prayer of business is to establish the rules of proceeding for tonight. I'm going to be guided by the moderator's manual, that is what's generally used by moderators throughout the state for all town meetings and school meetings, up here, school budget meetings. Is there any objection to me using the moderator's manual as our procedures for this meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, seeing none, we're going to do that. Next, by law, a person who's not registered to vote in the RSU is not allowed to speak at this meeting without consent of two-thirds of the voters present. However, there are some administrators here who aren't voters in this district, but they may be needed to answer questions or provide information regarding the budget. So I'll ask for general consensus to allow these folks to speak, again, provide information, answer questions. If they wanted to debate or speak in favor or against the motion, that's not what we're doing right now. If that comes up, I need a, I look for you for a separate consent from that. But for just providing information to be answered questions, we have Ken Neely, the superintendent, John Holly for Record Operations, Jess Madsen, Elm Street Principal, Sean Vincent, Whittier, Middle School Principal, and Eric Anderson, a high school principal. Is any objection to letting these folks address the meeting for informational purposes? Seeing none, we're going to go with that. At this time, I'm going to turn it back over to the superintendent, who is going to talk a little about the budget, I think the business can be comfortable as well.
Thank you. I just want to do a brief overview of our budget and what has gone into it, and then I'll turn it over to the space, and we will do the impact in the revenue. Essentially, what we have is a budget for you is approximately 6.56% increase from last year. Our goal for this particular budget was to have, be able to pay for all of predicted contract salaries and benefits. We believe the total right now is 1.2 million, just over 1.2 million dollars of those combined. Another aspect of this budget was to pay for initial interest payment for our bond that we anticipated. Unfortunately, the bond did not pass. So you will be seeing this evening an opportunity where 185,808 dollars will actually be removed from one of the articles, and promised the community who did not get the bond would not get the interest payment. We also wanted to make sure that we had sufficient personnel levels for the pre- and separate elementary school, our one middle school, and our one high school. One of the other things that have gone into this budget is we have been trying to reduce the impact, is we've brought 1.5 million dollars of carryover in order to reduce the blow by there. The, some of the issues with state subsidy we did, although initially we got a $47,890 deduction with subsidy, it came back with a modification where we actually increased our subsidy by 313,009 dollars. We also have an required local increase of 428,000, predicted $50, because of valuation Basically, the status of the penalty becomes more, of more value that there should be paid more loads. We also had a decrease of our economically disadvantaged students, which essentially means that we had a reduction of 380,000 dollars to our funding as a result of that. And we believe, as many of my colleagues believe, that's what went into being able to pay for all of our meals that are free this year, they did it through the taking advantage of subsidy. I will leave the revenue opportunities to Stacy to talk about any of the tax impacts.
Now, I don't think anybody can hear me if I was down there, so I will speak up here. Good evening. The first 11 articles we'll be voting on are based on the extended budget. I'll be sharing the revenue budget with you and pointing out the articles where you can find the amounts. The first area is the required local. This is the amount each town must raise in the EPF funding formula in order to receive our state subsidy. The mill expectation for FY '24 is 6.97. It was 7.1 for FY '23, but once again, our valuation has increased. District-wide, it increased by 82,416,667 dollars. This is the main revenue service valuation that is used here. You will see this amount in Article Number 12, and it is 8,407,330 dollars, which is an increase of 428,350 dollars. The next section is the local only debt, and this is the middle school edition. It doesn't include the proposed bond for the three elementary school heating systems, because when we had put through the warrant articles, we had not yet had the vote on the bond. This section, as well as the additional local raised, are based on the RRG 16 funding formula, which is 90% valuation and 10% in normal. The valuation in this form is also the main revenue service valuation. The cost there for McCann Falls is 17.2%, Minette is 20.2%, and Polon's share is 62.6%. The funds to raise local only debt are included in Article 13. The article to expend the funds to make the debt payment is an expenditure article, and that is Article 10. We will reduce both these articles by 185,808 dollars, because the bond will was not successful. The adjusted amount for local only debt will be 409,394 dollars, which is an increase of 5,472 dollars. The additional local amount is the additional amount needed to fund the full expenditure budget. You will see this amount in Article 14, and it is 3,202,913 dollars, and that is an increase of 136,744 dollars. Moving on to state revenue, the state subsidy is also based on the EPF funding formula. You will see this amount in Article 12, and it is the difference between the total appropriation and the required local amount raised. The state subsidy is 13,801,356 dollars, and it is an increase of 338,099 dollars. Also under state revenues is state agency clients, which is funds that come in for services for eligible students, and the national award certification. This is a stipend for nationally recognized teachers. We had three last year, and we're just the pass group for these funds. We receive the money from the state, and then we make the payment out to the teachers in the expenditure budget. The other revenue section includes tuition. We have three students this year, but we'll only have two next year. We can charge the state average tuition rate or our local people cost, whichever is less. The state average tuition rate currently for breaks nine through 12 is 12,558.90 per student. RSU expends only 11,735.32 for nine-to-all students, and so that's all we can charge. The K8 difference would be even more drastic, at 10,878.41 per student, but RRG 16 is 8,852.69 per student. The interest income is generated from a mutual balance, and you will see these items under Article 15, asking for permission to receive and expend other funds in support of the school budget. These amounts help bring down the additional local required, which in turn will reduce the tax impact. The fund balance. After the FY '23 allocation, which is what we've used traditionally in the budget, of 874,351 dollars, and a transfer of 70,000 to the IP account, our audited fund balance remaining is 2,077,962 dollars. We're proposing to use 1.5 million for the FY '24 budget, which will leave us the fund balance of 577,962 dollars, and that is 2.23%. Any funds remaining will close out FY '23, will be added to the fund balance and audited, and then be available to be used in subsequent years. Article 15 is the summary of the entire budget, which at the time of one article was put together approved, was 27,584,272 dollars. This article will also be reduced by the failure of the number of 185,808 dollars, making the new amount of the total budget 27,398,464 dollars. This is an increase of 1,512,78 dollars, factoring in an increase of 70,000 for the capital improvement amount. And that is because in the past, we usually raised 200,000 for CIP. But last year, you may remember the food service had a healthy balance, and so instead of putting 70,000 to food service program, we applied that to the capital improvements. We're also requesting an additional 40,000 for the adult education budget. And so once those amounts are added, the increase request for Polon would be 363,792 dollars. McCann Falls, 131,664 dollars, and Minette, 174,164 dollars. We just have one other article that will need to be changed, another Article 16, which is the adult ed budget. The appropriation we're asking for is 242,800, not 422,420,800 dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. So now I'm just going to go over the theme for this evening. So the business, the agenda for tonight is the report that's available upfront, and we have 21 articles to go through. I'll take up each article in turn. I'll read each article, and I'll look for a motion in a second. I'll then open up the floor for discussion. The small crowd, there is a microphone up here for discussion. You're welcome to speak loudly from your seat, but if anybody here can't hear somebody speaking, just type up and let us know, and we'll try to correct that. So if you wish to speak, just stand up, raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. When I do, please state your name and the town you're from. Questions should go through the moderator for me, and I'll pass the questions on to the appropriate person. And please make limit all remarks relevant to the motion that's on the floor. And I'll just reserve any other procedural things, like limiting the time for speaking, if they come, we'll see how we'll do this yet. And, but I'll also argue with one tool, sometimes we can have prolonged debate on a, on a motion or an article, and it can get a little frustrating. I don't have the power of moderator to end discussion or debate on a, on a motion. You guys do, and if you are tired of hearing discussion and would like to go on with your vote, you can make a motion and say it's gone, and we'll be in discussion. And that is a little extraordinary, because it requires two-thirds of the vote in the meeting. Okay? Let's just march right into this.
Moderator?
Yes.
Regarding microphones, we do have this live screening, so we ought to have people use the microphone so they can be heard.
Okay, is the little device there going to catch people in the?
Great question. Probably not.
Okay, so yes, if you have comments to make, we'd like to share them with everyone who's tuning in, and please use the microphone that's here, okay? You don't have to do that in the meeting with motion for a second. All right, so here we go. Article 1, shall regional school units?
Mr. Mauret.
Yeah.
Question.
I'm sorry.
Yes, just while I was fresh, the, you were going with some numbers concerning the other revenue, the 70,000 for capital improvement account, 20,000 for adult ed. Is that included in the numbers, or is that not included in these numbers? Because I know some of the numbers have not been included.
It's not included in the total budget amount, because they are, they are separate, but it is included in the last grouping of numbers that I read that will impact each town.
So the overall budget, that's not included in the overall budget?
No, the 27 million is only the general fund budget for the school system, and then the capital improvement is separate, and adult ed is also a separate budget.
That's how we've broken down each of the articles without the words?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions before we move on to? Yes?
And here goes the PM, Polon. Did you have the negotiations where teachers and everything, I think, had their rounds of what we thought, salaries were being, how it's there, had that vote, are they in time? Did we have final numbers?
The question is whether we have final numbers on the teacher contracts, I guess? Okay. Can someone answer that question?
We have come to an agreement with the teachers, but we do not have a signed contract yet, and we are still in the process of negotiating about near, close to a temporary agreement with the support staff.
Okay, here we go. Article 1, shall regional school unit 16 be authorized to spend 10,333,399 dollars for regular instruction? Thank you. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you. So Article 1 has been moved and seconded. We can open up the floor for discussion. Is there any discussion, debate, questions about Article 1? Okay, seeing none, we're going to vote on Article 1. I believe everyone got a little green card when they checked in, and that's what we're going to use to vote, so you can, by raising your green card. Thank you. All those in favor of Article 1 as written? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. Article 1 passes as a good. Article 2, shall regional school unit 16 be authorized to extend 5,441,819 dollars for special education? Very much.
Download.
Okay.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 2? Yes, Derek. You mind giving your name again?
Yeah, Matthew here, Polon. I see that this one section, like, went down 19%. Are we losing the interest person? How was that?
We are not losing a resource person. What we're doing is we're trying to bring our students back in for our school, and that has to do with not trying to send people out to outside placements.
Any other questions for discussion on Article 2? Yes?
James, that would be Polon. How many students do we have on the federal legislative component?
I believe we're at 16%, I don't know exactly now.
And the person behind her, do you want? Okay. Any other discussion questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to vote on Article 2 as written. All those in favor? Thank you. Repose? Thank you. Article two passes as written. Article three, shall regional school units sixteen be authorized to spend zero dollars for career and technical education?
Second. Okay.
Okay, uh, been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? I have a contentious article. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I am, uh, Brandon Ball, Coleman, can you explain why that is zero or what are we modern with?
Yeah, the way we start business with the vocational schools, we're formula that is done through boostin'. Uh, we do not have to raise any money to send our students there.
Was that by a list there or?
It is covered by a list.
They just pay for all the pounds.
They they have a funding formula that will draw in all of their receivers, uh, and they do it based on their student population.
Do they receive, just like we will receive funds from Coleman, do they receive state funds for our, when our students go to their? Was it a technical school or not?
Right, but they do, they get a subsidy just like we do for every student that goes to their school, they receive as that today.
So not probably how many of our students are participating in that?
I believe about sixty this year.
Sixty, no, that's high school, not.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion on Article three? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Thank you. Article three passes as written. Article four, shall regional school units sixteen be authorized to spend? Six hundred fifty thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars for other instruction. Very much.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article four? Yes, sir.
Um, Matt Meader, Coleman, uh, what's the trips increase? Where does that come from? And also, um, didn't have that program, does he find that?
Uh, for the trips increase, obviously the fuel, uh, it's an increase in cut, uh, that we're factoring here as well from trips. Uh, and, uh, you say you noticed the programs have gone down.
Well, just the one of the athletes. W M S athletes. Right, it's slowed down by the half percent.
Yeah, that's the middle school program, and I'm not sure which one we're talking about, what it is.
Any other questions or comments on? Article four? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of Article four? Thank you, opposed? Thank you. Article four passes as written. Article five, shall regional school units sixteen be authorized to spend? Two million five hundred twenty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars on student and staff support.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article five? Yes.
Thank you, Matt. If we're pulling, I'm wondering if, uh, there are any funds filled or funded positions in this one?
Any other questions?
We we do have unfilled, but we are funding position. We still have a few, uh, folks for, uh. Our social services and our hands, uh, or conflict positions that's going on there.
Are there any other questions or comments on Article five, extending the status support here? Yes.
Uh, Matt Meader, Coleman, when you have a unfilled position, what happens to that money that's allocated? Where does that go?
When you said we have it under, we tried to fill it, the ground savings, you know what happens, it stays in our, our, in our, um, uh, line. And then it is turned over as excess after the audit from the next year.
And then what happens with those lots?
Well, it's it's taken, it's said unused fund will carry over to the next year after the audit. And it'll be used later on for, uh, proceeding year. For instance, we're asking for one point five million dollar. Uh, uh, fund balance to come over. That's what it's used for. They're trying to offset taxes.
Any other discussion? Yes.
For five, Coleman, can you explain the hundred twelve percent increase for guidance?
What we have is, uh, we have, uh, things, we have added a school council under a grant. Uh, we have now, uh, added an additional school counselor for P C Ns, right? Yeah, so additional school counselor is the primary.
You said add. You're not adding a person, adding.
We're moving, we're losing the great public, so we're moving, uh, into the regular.
Yes.
Uh, you you said that that position is previously not filled. But we're adding another position?
No, no. No, you, we have counselors in every school. We have social workers in every school. In this particular school, we have two counselors that are there right now. Uh, and one is, uh, granted, uh, funded, and we are moving that into the regular project, which is why that ticked the lines that increased. We have positions in middle school, uh, especially in high school that still need to be built for an year.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Article five? Thank you, opposed? Thank you. Article five passes as written. Article six. Shall regional school unit sixteen be authorized to spend eight hundred seventeen thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars for system administration?
Second.
Any discussion on Article six? They seem none, all those in favor of Article six? Thank you, opposed? Thank you. Article six passes as written. Article seven. Shall regional school units sixteen be authorized to spend? One million five hundred fifteen thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars for school administration?
Second.
Thank you. I'm getting discussion on Article seven. Yes.
No, sorry, John's on the gun.
Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of Article seven? Thank you, opposed? Thank you. Article seven passes as written. Article eight, shall regional school units sixteen be authorized to spend? One million six hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars for transportation and bunkers.
Second.
Any discussion on Article eight? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Thank you. Article eight passes as written. Article nine. Shall regional school units sixteen be authorized to spend? Three million forty-seven thousand sixty-eight dollars for facilities maintenance.
Second.
Any discussion on Article one? Yes.
Dave Tyler from Miami, just wondering if the facility budget includes? Uh, emergency funds in case some of the boilers that were not replaced. Because real many schools have problems. Is there a solid way to pay for that if that happens?
Yeah.
Uh, there is not per se emergency funds to be able to replace them, but to repair them just like we did last time. Yeah, yeah, we we also could take it out of our capital improvements, provided that is passed.
And there's probably obviously no way to estimate, given.
Right.
They are. Yeah.
Any other discussion on Article nine? Okay, all those in favor of Article nine? Thank you, opposed? Thank you. Article nine passes as written. Article ten, shall regional school units sixteen be authorized to extend? Five hundred and ninety-five thousand two hundred and two dollars for debt service and other commitments. Uh, I, uh, this is gonna do it earlier, that this is, um. So I'll entertain a motion for the. This, uh, Article ten in a limited amount. So we don't have to go through a lending.
I meant the motion that we reduce the amount by a hundred eighty-six, six thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. So the new amount will be four hundred and nine thousand three hundred and ninety-four.
Second.
That's correct. And and the reduction is one hundred and five thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
One hundred.
At the end number is four oh nine three nine four. Okay, so the motion is to approve Article ten. In the amount of four hundred and nine thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars. And that's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Thank you. Article ten passes as, um, I read. Article eleven, shall regional school units sixteen be authorized to spend nine hundred sixty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars for all other expenditure?
Second.
Thank you, yes, sir. So why is, I, if I read that, it looks like all of this might use contingency, will that be right?
Uh. But, yeah, the reason we have it in contingency is we have, as we were talking about having for, uh. Unanticipated and squeezing the salary after those, the numbers are not in the salary line at this point.
Any other discussion on Article eleven? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Thank you. Article eleven passes as written. So those first eleven articles were the expenditure articles, um, the next. Three articles are revenue article. And, uh, these were due by the course of work, they're accounted, I mean. And I think that's. Three by four. Thank you. So Article twelve, we're gonna do these next, uh, four articles have to be by. Articles twelve, thirteen, and fifteen have to be right recorded, so we're gonna count the company hands or forward against. And Article fourteen actually has to be by the written value, so we'll give that when we get to it. So Article twelve, shall regional school units sixteen appropriate? Twenty-two million one hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. For the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve. As describing the essential programs in service of funding act. And shall regional school units sixteen raise? Eight million four hundred seven thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. And assess the amount set forth below as each municipality contribution to the total cost. Of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve. As describing the essential programs in service of funding act. In accordance with the main revised statutes titled twenty-eight, section fifteen, six eighty-eight. And the recommended amounts are in two columns below. On the left column is the amount of of the E P S, um. What what the state formula determines is enough for basic education, and that totals twenty-two million. Hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars. And the breakdown among the three towns is above that. On the right-hand side is the amount that, um, is needed to be. On here. Raised in order to receive the state subsidy, and that totals eight million four hundred seven thousand. Three hundred thirty dollars, and the breakdown between the towns is above that. Um, is there a really funny part of the twelve?
Second.
Any discussion on Article twelve? Yes.
And Anthony Coleman, is is the adjustment made with Article ten reflected in what we use? A duty?
It it is not. Well, I think we're gonna make an adjustment in the next one. Any other questions or discussion on Article twelve? Yes.
Mr. Tyler, Coleman. Uh, other revenues, there were fifty years, something for something. Five, three, eight million, which I excluded in twelve. We can. We're trying to be, when the state was planned, we felt it around this market. And all of your back.
This is, this is just the state subsidy and the requiring local. So this was, this is the first talk of this section on the, on the spreadsheet. That I talked about requiring local, where the towns have to raise to eight point four million. And then the state subsidy, which is the thirteen million, you get that number by subtracting the eight point four million from the twenty-two million. So this is just. The amount that the state appropriates for us in E P S, and then our required amount to get that amount of money. Um, when you're looking at balancing everything out, we have an additional local article. And that was the third section on your revenue spreadsheet. So you add all those numbers up together, that's when you get that one point five billion of the bar. That is the increase from year to year.
Is there any, any other discussion on Article twelve? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna vote, and remember we're gonna count, so you guys have a plan on counting.
So, um, Paulie, yes, everybody just raise their green card, come on, vote yes. If you wanna vote no, wait till it's called no, please keep your card up, um. So we can take time to count, make sure we get everybody.
Okay, so all those in favor, raise your big heart and roll them up. Yep. Good with that number? You guys count?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Uh, all opposed? Any other votes? I think I got you. So the results are? Okay, so the results are forty-three yes, two no's, for Article twelve passes as written. Article thirteen, I'm gonna take the liberty. And if anybody objects, they can let me know to read this amount in what I expect will be the amount. So shall regional school units sixteen raise and appropriate? Four hundred and nine thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars. For the annual payments on debt service previously approved by the legislative body. For non-state funded school construction projects. Or non-state funded portions of school construction projects. In addition to the funds appropriated as the local share of the school administrative unit's contribution to the total cost. Of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve.
You seconded.
Okay, so the loop, these loops executed in the amount that I read. Um, is there any discussion on Article thirteen? Yeah.
I think we've asked before, but I'm not sure if there's good answers. One point five million of the data fund balance over whatever, is that in to show that?
It does not appear in this. In this, uh, one. Well, the budget is prepared, uh, as the statutes require. And they, for some reason, don't include that. And so, wow. If you add up numbers and you'll see that the revenue numbers don't add up to the total budget. The difference is. Other revenue sources that the district. Is that a fair statement?
Well, Article fifteen, Article fifteen does talk about spending balances, tuition of students, state subsidy, and others in the school, but it says so. I think Article fifteen encompasses it.
Yeah, there. Okay. Any other discussion on Article thirteen? Okay, seeing none, again, we're gonna do a D account, um, to historic thirteen, again, in the amount of four hundred and nine thousand. Three hundred and ninety-four dollars in favor? Okay, all those opposed? Okay, so the results are forty-six yes and zero no, so Article thirteen passes as read. Article fourteen, um, this is going to require a written ballot, so is the plan that we hand out, you distribute the ballot?
Yeah, I can, or people can come up and grab them, it might be easier that way, probably make sure we get all the registered voters.
Okay.
And not people that shouldn't have them.
Okay, so they'll come up, up here?
Yeah, they can come up here, you can't come up with the brain, but I don't know how to, you get it without getting people that shouldn't have them. You know, it's.
I'm not sensitive, how to read card.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that, too.
So there is give you ballots, everyone who has a green card. And while I knew that, we're going to read the article. Article fourteen shall regional school unit sixteen raise and appropriate three million two hundred two thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars in additional local funds, which exceeds the state financial program in services allocation model by three million one hundred thirty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars as required upon the budget recommended by the RSU sixteen board director. The board, the RSU sixteen board director recommends three million two hundred two thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars for additional local funds, and it gives the following reasons for exceeding the state financial program in services funding model by three million one hundred thirty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. The amount is needed to cover the cost of RSU sixteen school, but the state's funding model does not recognize, and has reduced and eliminated from the funding formula. So is there any discussion on Article fourteen? I'm sorry, is there a motion? Thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you. Now, is there any discussion on Article fourteen? Okay, seeing none, we're going to vote, so this, we'll be starting handing out. Yes?
Beautiful, um, can you just refer to memory, what does that specifically cover in the spreadsheet that you?
Things before is that going on?
If you look at revenue sheet that, that's part of your packet, it is the third section, additional local. And that is funded using the EPS funding formula. And so, the percentages that are shared in the new O I holding pays two, over two million mechanic balls is five hundred fifty-one thousand and minus six hundred forty-eight thousand, so this is an increase from last year of one hundred thirty-six thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars. And what that covers is, once we have the state subsidy and the required local that we have to raise to get the state subsidy, this is the balance of the amount that's needed to fund the budget.
Okay, yes? Yes? Any other questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none?
Where is the moderator?
Let's see, it's still.
David Tyler, I'm wondering what the state has eliminated or reduced in the funding formula, but I didn't think that, what the state cut out?
That's a really good question, I don't know if they cut anything out, I think, or suspect they cut out, as I talked about, for the, uh, funding of the, uh, free meals. Uh, but, the funding formula is a mystery to most people, uh, and I would profess nowhere to be held to it, so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we're going to vote on a written ballot, I think everyone, anybody not, did anybody not get a ballot and they stayed in court? Okay, so, check yes or no, and then we're going to deposit in this ballot box here. Oh, did you do? See, you're going to, you're going to vote to you. I, I'll suggest, you don't have to vote your ballot, you can, I just suggest that you don't vote your ballot, if you're.
And that's the all going to be counted out.
Okay, so we, we have the results, um, it's with forty-seven in favor and four opposed, so Article fourteen passes as read. Article fifteen shall regional school unit fifteen authorize the RSU sixteen board director to spend okay, I'm going to, I'm going to really be, now, again, thinking that it is, again, repeating, not that I think we're going to end up at, this is reducing by one eighty-five, eight oh eight. So, shall regional school unit sixteen authorize the RSU sixteen board director to spend twenty-seven million three hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four for regional school unit sixteen's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the essential program and services funding act. Funds for non-state funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under the main revised statutes titled twenty A, section fifteen six ninety, unexpendable balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for support of schools. Yeah, I take it the motion in the second is to be noted that are read?
Yeah.
So Article fifteen, the movement second is, is there any discussion on Article fifteen? Okay, the last one, we're going to count the votes, um, and again, as a reminder, we're voting on Article fifteen to the amount of twenty-seven million three hundred nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars. So, okay, all those in favor? Okay, so the vote was forty-five in favor and one opposed, so Article fifteen passes as I read. Article sixteen, to see if regional school unit sixteen, oh, again, I'm going to do this again, I'm going to take liberties, and adjust the, and correct the typo as I read. To see if regional school unit sixteen will appropriate two hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred dollars for adult education and raise one hundred and thirty thousand dollars as the local share for the year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four, with authorization to expend any additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest and well-being of the adult education program. Thank you, any discussion on Article sixteen? Okay, so, we're going to vote on this in the amount that I read, uh, the appropriation amount is two hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred dollars and the local share of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, all those in favor of Article sixteen? Thank you, opposed? Thank you, so Article sixteen passes as I read. Article seventeen, shall regional school unit sixteen be authorized to raise two hundred thousand dollars for the capital improvement reserve?
Seconded.
Thank you, any discussion on Article seventeen, yes? So then, any question is why, maybe we just talked for two hundred thousand dollars not being enough?
Right, two hundred thousand dollars wasn't nearly enough, uh, if you probably remember from the public meeting, I said we'd probably need to add additional two million dollars for that, but because of the timing, uh, and budget had already been passed, um, from the, uh, from the, uh, school board, uh, it was not timely enough to add additional money to it. Uh, so we, the thought processes, the relevant task force, uh, come up with whatever recommendations the subcommittees and the school board need to do take on, and then next year, you'll probably see a very, uh, significant move to, to increase that.
One hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Any other discussion on Article seventeen? Yeah, back to your poll, what is that used for?
Say again?
What is that funded for?
The C I P?
Yes.
Uh, is used for capital improvements, and what we do, what we do, uh, we make a look, long list of things that have to be improved. For instance, maybe doors have to replace, windows replaced in buildings, uh, and that's what it's used for, is something you want regularly, just normal maintenance.
Thank you, yes, sir?
Chris, I have a poll. You know, it's two hundred, same question, two, uh, two hundred thousand left, left over, is there a project earmarked, or if it doesn't get a swag?
You'd have to probably define project, maybe there's nothing in, no project big and large is replacing, uh, boiler, but there are, uh, projects replacing, uh, uh, the, uh, windows and, and some, uh, doors particularly, in, in the, uh, uh, in, in, in some of the elementary store, but we do have a long list that we have to accomplish with that money, uh, and we do as much as we possibly can with it.
Any other discussion on Article seventeen, yes, sir?
Yeah, I may need to watch and poll, and I'm just spinning off something there, and, because I was at that meeting as well, I, I didn't even have in my head that you guys, that I could deal with it like, like through a normal budget process, so, and clearly kind of mentioned that I technically, technically, you guys were just looking at it at the last meeting, and it doesn't sound like that happened, was I misunderstood, that I actually put it against what you looked at after the bond failed, and then just chose not to, or you just, I'm just kind of curious, some of the reasoning there, like I said, it seemed like that could have been something done there.
Uh, sure, uh, the bond failed. Okay.
Yeah, that was like what?
Oh, listen to my answer, right, that the bond failed, the voter spoke, so, uh, we could have rejected the budget as it had been presented at our last meeting, we chose not to do that, uh, and have a, a more, uh, uh, process and plan to accomplish the, uh, uh, the, uh, projects needing to be done. Adding the amount of money that I had just said, one of the things we needed with the bond, we needed, uh, in, uh, community support clearly we didn't have it, and then we were afraid, I was afraid, that if we added that two million dollars to that, it looked like we were just thumbing our nose at the voters, uh, you already rejected it once, now we're going to do it just because we get it, and I'm afraid that the budget would not pass.
I don't, I think you're misunderstanding it, why it was rejected, the communities rejected it because you were trying to wait like over five million. Well, what I'm asking is why didn't you add the two, whatever million, just to care of one school, because that was the complaint from the community, is that you looked at all three, and tried to fund all three at the same time. So again, my, my question, why was there no attempt to just through a normal budget process, fund that one school? For, hey, because you guys were waiting, something terrible happened to my, I swear, why was there no attempt in the budget's process to deal with that?
It was spelled, and we didn't have enough time, and we would have to reject the original budget that we had already passed, uh, and the school board did not have, uh, the desire to do that.
How much time would we need, I mean, how long would your budget process normally start, like, you, you knew this was happening, really, by the February, when did the year go by, February? February, when did the year go about, February, what day was it? November? So, you understand what concern is, it say, well, you didn't have time, well. I think you did have time. I think you guys decided to try to push that, that on. And now you're trying to blame the communities for not having it there. And well, I know it might not come fine that way, or we play, and that's exactly what's going on, that every excuse is. While the community didn't support it, when the community didn't support it, we had to buy it, we had to build it for preschools. The community would have supported it, too, and have to take care of one. And I'm disappointed that it wasn't brought up in the budget process at all. You guys have pushed it back and said, we're gonna, we're gonna try to put it on record, I know. And that was very unfortunate.
Thank you, yes sir.
They did have to remind it. I know for a fact it's not just mine, and I know there are schools that there is not key in some rooms. Some rooms have had teachers working without a key. Now, that's not just mine. This is an overall problem, over children rejected that term, but it was not a problem. That was somehow invented the last minute or pushed through hastily, this is. It's been a long process, this, anybody who knows the school. Knows this had been a problem all within. This was not a surprise. And it's disappointing that some voters chose not to support it.
Thank you, yes sir.
Matt, you're full, and is there a way that, um? How, how much is it to fix that one boiler? And is there a way that we can propose to an amendment like we've done these other ones? To add that cost to it?
Unfortunately, there's no adding to this budget, we can only subtract from the budget. Uh, the, uh, project for that one building is approximately two million dollars, a little under two million dollars. There is a mechanism which we could do, uh, that is a, uh, purchase lease agreement. A tax incentive purchase lease agreement, but that still would improve, uh, uh, a long-term. Opportunity for a project also within, uh, with interest involved, and so. Uh, I think the, uh, the task force will, will take on, uh, what was, what they proposed should be needed for each one of those buildings. And come up with a long-term plan.
Do they all have to get replaced, all of them?
If the, the, the consultant we have dealt, uh, dealt with. Knows that all three of the elementary schools have to be replaced sometime in the near future. We had the priority of, uh, uh, quite honestly, we thought Elster was a priority. Uh, and then the boiler went out with my head. So, that, that became the problem.
Thank you, any other discussion on Article seventeen? Yes.
So, just to clarify. Um, you can only do proposed decreases in this, not increments.
It's, it's, because the bottom of the article isn't working. Any other discussion on Article seventeen? Okay, see now I like the favor? Thank you, opposed? Thank you. So Article seventeen passes as written, Article eighteen. Shall regional school unit sixteen be authorized to spend up to three hundred thousand dollars for the capital improvement reserve fund? Thank you, is there discussion on Article eighteen? Yes, thank you, please.
Uh, as I said before, we have a long list of things that need to be accomplished. And what this does, does give us, you know, we have a hundred and fifty thousand in the account right now. Uh, with the two hundred thousand dollars that, presumably that will be, uh, passed. Uh, that we can get, we can expend that for three hundred thousand dollars. And it hasn't, we have a long list of things that need to be accomplished with, with that money.
So the hundred fifty, actually two hundred thousand. That goes towards the capital improvement fund. The last one, to spend more, where is that extra money coming from?
We just, we were asked the question, how much do we have in the account right now, it's a hundred and fifty thousand? So that hundred and fifty thousand, we can, if, if this is passed, we can spend a hundred thousand of that. Plus the two hundred thousand that we just authorized, and that's what we use.
Thank you. Any other one on Article eighteen? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Thank you, Article eighteen passes as written. Article nineteen, in the event that regional school unit sixteen receives more state education subsidy. Than the amount included in its budget. Shall the board of directors be authorized to use all or part of the additional state subsidy? To increase expenditures for school purposes in the buff center category approved by the board of directors. Increase the allocation of finances in a reserve on the plan by the board of directors. And/or decrease the local cost share application of the fine in Title twenty A. Section fifteen, six seventy-one dash A, one B. For local property taxpayers for funding public education approved by the board of directors. There's a recommendation that factually be a hundred percent, increase expenditure zero percent, and CIP reserve be zero percent.
Seconded.
Thank you, is there discussion on Article nineteen? Yes.
We're also following the manual percentage that's changed with, or is that a little more condition of?
Um, so, I'm actually not sure what the recommendation means.
Well, our recommendation, well, it's always been trying to be, uh, uh, for some. Unusual reason, get, get additional money from the state, which is unlike it. Uh, we always try to put it towards tax revenue. Uh, and honestly, I don't know whether this recommendation didn't change, but it is a recommendation, but it doesn't tie in letting, so.
Yeah, the, the, the article itself can be changed.
Right.
Can be amended, so the article says, if we get additional state subsidy, you can do A, B, and/or C. Uh, you can, like, if, if, if the meeting wants to have a hundred percent. Uh, go to tax relief, then they can, you can amend it by eliminating A and B, and just leave C. Or the other combination of that, um. And I, I think you can progress what you'd like the board to do with any additional state subsidy. But anything you say not defining on the, they can still do with, with their truthfully, with their discretion. Yes.
I think the motion that we. Make the necessary changes, make additional money, you see, they go into the CIP.
Okay, so. No, I, I'll take the motion to, please amend the motion that was made earlier. So, the motion is to put everything into.
As you said.
Okay, so, I'm gonna suggest. That if you want to do that, in the effective way to do that, because as I said, we can't change recommendations, is to. Eliminate A and C.
I'll make the motions to eliminate A and B.
So, CIP was the second one, right? Yeah, okay. No, it's the second.
No.
So, one, A, is increase expenditure for school purposes in the buff center category. B is increase the allocation of finances in the north reserve fund. And C and D is below the cost share expectation. So, it's the motion to.
You, all I go into is that I can return the call.
Okay. Okay. I'm gonna read this. As I think that you're asking, and you can tell me if that's true, in the end. So. Article, beginning in the event, regional school unit sixteen receives more state education subsidy than the amount included in its budget. Shall the board of directors be authorized to use all or part of additional state subsidy? I'm gonna draw the line, you know? The first column, two. Increase the allocation of finances in. The CIP reserve fund. Approved by the board of directors. In or. And, and I'm gonna strike. Everything after in or except the question mark. Is that your intent?
Yes.
Okay, so, since we just clarified that, can I get a second? There. So, on the floor now is a motion to amend Article nineteen, and I just read it. Um, and, so we're gonna discuss the motion to amend, okay? Yes, sir.
Matt, you're full. So, by changing this, does it? Uh, limit the board's flexibility into where they want to allocate? Because right now, this is just a recommendation location. Whereas the board can allocate it in different areas. Would the board be locked in just in the CIP fund?
If that amendment passes, yes. Uh, I think also the board, so let's say they got another hundred thousand dollars in state subsidy. Now, the board has discretion, if, if this amendment passes. Then, the board would have discretion to put that hundred thousand dollars into CIP reserve. Or some of it, or none.
With only, they, it would only, it would only be able to.
So it's either going to the general fund, or all or part of it is going to CIP if this amendment passes.
So it limits the board's flexibility?
Does not allow the board to increase cost and expenditures or decrease, decrease the settlements.
So it eliminates their, their choice. They could only go into either the general fund or CIP.
Yeah. And again, if they get a hundred thousand dollars. It's the board's discretion whether they want to put zero, fifty thousand or done into CIP, but. So, yeah.
So if they're eliminating that from this minute. Those other options aren't available. I'm reading it wrong.
If we pass the article that has amended, proposed to be amended. Board could only, if we got additional state subsidy, board could only put that money into CIP reserve. Or if they chose not to put all of it, or none of it into CIP reserve, it would just go to the general.
And what general?
No. The. Their fund.
Sort of eliminates their, what I want to get at, it's yes or no, it eliminates. Their discretion of where to put the money.
Can you, I, I wanted to, I, I guess, I think exactly that's the, the case. If it goes into the CIP, what limit, if, if we magically get a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we get that extra revenue, it goes to CIP. Uh, and because it's in the CIP, and we have the capacity then to use it. Um, as long as it doesn't go over the three hundred thousand dollars we've already approved. Um, but it also will carry over from year to year in the CIP, so. If we get the money to get, we carry over to CIP, it would not carry over in our general fund. And when we have it on it, it will not carry over, we could not use it for that anyways.
Yes.
Yeah, that's very much my, my intention to the whole thing. Because we know we got a mountain coming. And so we add a little bit of that, so, that is one of the worst situations, where you're just taking, um, everything with it all.
Okay, it is certainly another step, and again, we're talking about the motion to amend, we're not. We're not voting on this article yet. Yes.
CIP is used for maintenance, correct?
Yes.
So, let, let's say you get magically to get two million dollars in that fund. Can you use that? To fund your boiler?
Sure.
Or is that not considered maintenance?
Oh, no, no, you, you could use it for any, anything, it's maintenance or facilities. Uh, or even, uh, if you need a new truck or something like that, that could be a lot of that stuff.
So let's say you, um. You've done all your maintenance, I know it's not possible, but let's say it is, and you have that money that's in there. What safeguards are there that you're just not purposing nice to have items?
I, I like to put on sets, we have our new operators, we're not trying to buy things nice to have. Uh, what we're trying to do is try to take care of the, the green facilities.
Like savings person.
Right.
Any other discussion on the motion to amend? Okay, so we're gonna vote on this, again, we're not voting on the article finally. We're just voting on changing the motion to eliminate those two purposes. Uh, so all those in favor of the motion to amend? Thank you, opposed? Okay, so, the motion to amend carries. But now, the motion to amend is on the floor. Any discussion on that? Okay. Before we go, I'm gonna reread the article as I said, to amend it so that we have the record of it. In the event that regional school unit sixteen receives more state education subsidy. Than the amount included in its budget. Shall the board of directors be authorized to use all or part of the additional state subsidy? To increase the allocation of finances in the CIP reserve fund approved by the board of directors. Question mark. Okay. So we're voting on, we're voting on that. Uh, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Thank you. Okay, so. Article nineteen passes as amended. Article twenty, in addition to amount approved in the preceding article. Shall regional school unit sixteen be authorized to spend funds. That may be received from several state grants or programs of other sources. During the fiscal year for school purposes. Provided that such grant programs or other sources do not require expenditure of other funds not previously appropriated.
Seconded.
Thank you, is there discussion on Article twenty? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Article twenty passes as written. Okay, the last article, Article twenty-one, shall on board of the records of regional school unit sixteen. Be authorized to issue notes. Not to exceed a period of five years. In the name of the district for the purpose of purchasing a school bus. In an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in appropriate estate.
Seconded.
Thank you, is there any discussion on Article twenty-one? Yes.
I, I, um, I don't think obviously all of our actual budgets that we have to do a lot of separate things. Like, forget something.
It's not a separate increase, we have to have authorization of what the board of directors to issue the notes, it would be a five-year lease purchase. And so the amount that is in the budget is the amount for the deposit. We do, we do a first year deposit, and then we, this purchase, the bus will remain over four years. It's been usually for twenty thousand, annual deposit almost.
Yes.
I think, Andy, and mine, I just have a question, I'm not one to ever really, I don't like to judge at all. Um, my whole intention is with the task force, we're, right now, we don't know what their recommendations would be to fix some of the. Underlying issues. And what if we go and need a bus? I'm just saying, lots of ideas have grown up, we don't know that, like, should we wait for the task force's recommendations work forward?
Yeah, I, I, I would suggest not. Uh, because, and for the, for the foreseeable future, we're gonna need buses, that's my, my belief, okay? Uh, it won't be a wasted investment. And if for some reason it came across and we just eliminated buses completely, we'd sell the buses.
Any other discussion on Article twenty-one? Yes.
Are we replacing an older bus?
Yes, that's what happens.
And how old was the bus?
Um. Rather.
Um, approximately. Nine years, the. The midpoint is something nine years.
Can I guess the one I'm supposed to?
Yeah.
And how many miles did it roll over that? Uh, one that was looking to replace, I remember it has, I don't know, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, you ever paid? And what's your life expectancy on the meat? Anything over a hundred and fifty on max, four, seven, five, fifty, as far out of time?
Yeah, any other discussion on Article twenty-one? Okay, speaking of, um, we're gonna vote on Article twenty-one, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Thank you. So Article twenty-one passes as written, uh, that's the end of the business we have to conduct tonight. We have all, everything we need for the minutes of this meeting? All right. Thank you all again for coming out and participating in the budget process. I really wanna thank the people that did my moves in seconds, thank you very much. And a reminder that the bus that we adopted today is subject to a yes or no vote. At the local polling places on June thirteen, I just made sure to go on and go.
I'd like to thank all the people that participated in this. Uh, the big members of the school, uh, team members, we're done with it, we really appreciate it, always.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave and board. Don't leave, I'm glad to talk to you, Dan.